Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Good afternoon. I call this our Hermosa Town Board Tuesday, January 9th, 2024, regular meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Road call. Ferguson.
Here.
Hendrickson.
Here.
Paulsworth.
Here.
Kramer.
Here.
Stiles.
Here.
Thank you for everybody and all the citizens in attendance. Thanks Chuck, our public works person, for being here. Mitch, our lawyer. Gail, our finance officer. Just welcome everybody. Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call for changes. Board members, please review the agenda. And I request a motion to accept agenda as presented slash amended.
Do that presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Vicki, seconded by Linda. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say same. Motion carries. For agenda item three, I will turn the chair over to Vicki and we resume as chair after agenda item three has been disposed of.
Request a motion to enter into the public hearing for lease of the town shop. Could I have a motion, please?
Make that motion.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carried.
One abstain.
The public is invited to comment on the following project: Resolution of Intent to Lease Real Property. Gail, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution of intent to lease real property and notice of hearing, whereas the town of Hermosa owns the following described real property in Hermosa Custer County, South Dakota, the property lots 20, 21, 22, and 23 in Block 3, Hermosa Custer County, South Dakota, the old Custer County Hermosa shop. And whereas Triple J K Properties LLC, a South Dakota limited liability company, desires to lease the foregoing property from the town of Hermosa for commercial purposes, now therefore be resolved, the town of Hermosa Board of Trustees hereby gives notice of its intent to lease the following described real property to Triple J K Properties LLC, a South Dakota limited liability company upon such terms and conditions as the town of Hermosa determines in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 19-12-5.2 to wit, lots 20, 21, 22, and 23 in Block 3, Hermosa Custer County, South Dakota, the old Custer County shop. The hearing on the resolution of intent shall be held on January 9th, 2024, at the hour of 6:00 PM at the Hermosa Town Office in Hermosa, South Dakota, dated this 19th day of December, 2023.
Thank you. Triple J K Properties LLC placed a bid of $1,200 per month, $14,400 per year. The terms will be one year with four option years. The cost of the lease will go up 3% each option year. Any comments from the public at this time? If no further comments from the public, I request a motion to approve the resolution of intent to lease real property as read by Gail and for approval for the vice chair to sign the contract with Triple J and K Properties LLC.
Make that motion. I'll second it.
Although, any further discussion? Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? One abstain.
Correct.
One abstain.
Motion carried. I request a motion to leave the public meeting and resume the regular meeting at item agenda number four.
I make that motion. I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carried.
The next item on the agenda is the oath of office for, for Gail as our finance officer. Mitch, will you read the oath of office?
It's in your packet, Mitch. Speech four.
Stand and raise your right hand and be after me. Aye, Gail Bodicker.
Aye, Gail Bodicker.
Having been hired to the office of finance officer.
Having been hired to the office of finance officer.
Within and for the town of Hermosa.
Within and for the town of Hermosa.
In said county and state.
In said county and state.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
The Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the ordinances of said town of Hermosa.
And the ordinance of said town of Hermosa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform all duties of my said office of finance officer.
Perform all duties of my said office of finance officer.
Can I sign this one or you want me to?
You can sign that one.
Okay.
Welcome.
I knew you weren't going anywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. Thank you, Gail. The consent calendar. A request of motion for the approval of the December 19th, 2023 regular meeting minutes as presented slash amended. Motion made by Vicki.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Donna. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor say aye. All opposed say same. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Conflict of Interest Declaration. All board members are responsible to refrain from discussion and voting on issues they have a conflict of interest with. Next item on the agenda is Planning and Zoning. Attached in the packet are the permits that were approved slash issued by Jill since the last meeting. They're there for FYI, no action is required. Next item on the agenda is Claims. Please review the payroll and claims. And I think, go ahead.
So, I'd like to amend the 1219, 2023 claims. You don't have a copy of them in the packet, but what happened was is there was one check that was written to South Dakota Municipal League Workers Comp for a total of $1,104.18. That check actually needed to be two different checks. And if you look at your claims tonight, they're the second and the third from the bottom on the top portion of the paper. So those two were broken out and were rewritten and put into these claims tonight. So it would be an amendment on the 1219.
I request a motion to approve the claims as amended. Motion made by Vicki.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Donna. Any discussion from the board?
The only discussion I have is would that have been more appropriate to do before we approved the minute of the last meeting where this comes from? Just curious here.
Oh, we approved that in the last?
Yeah.
The minutes were.
Oh, the claims were in the last one and then you put it back in.
1219.
Good comment. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say same. Motion carries.
Have a question.
Yes.
Number seven, the bid 2023-28, there's no action. What about that other permit? Did I miss something there, 2023-29? Moving permit?
Those permits, in past meetings, when we no longer have planning and zoning, we've changed who can approve the permits. And the permits now, some of them, depending on what they are, can be just issued when they come into the door, like digging permits, some of the moving permits and stuff like that. So what we do, so everybody knows what's going on, is they attach them, they're attached for information to say this is what issues, because Jill has authority to sign some of the permits and stuff. And so if you have a particular question on which one of the permits?
I don't have a question. I just wondered, but it sounded like he was going to skip over that and I don't know what was on there.
Yeah, they're in the packet. So, and maybe what we'll, maybe what we can do next time, so it's more, so it's clear, instead of just having them in the packet, what we'll do is we'll list them under planning and zoning and say, this was, you know, this was signed by Jill, this was approved by Jill, and we'll have them out there so it's more clear for you. Okay? Thank you for your comment. Law enforcement is the next item. No marshal report. County Custer log is attached. Any of the board members have a chance to look at that? And do you have any comments?
Why are they submitting that?
It's.
We don't have a contract with them.
We don't have a contract with them. It's just, we do, they do do our one, or we pay for the 911 call. And therefore, this is the calls that they respond to in reference to the money that we pay them to take the calls, so. The next item is, any further questions on the logs? The abatement, anything new and update on the prairie dogs?
No, I have nothing. I talked to Jill this afternoon and she still hasn't. So I think we just need to move on to our next step of taking care of them and building them.
And I know that in the last meeting, there was a comment from one of the citizens, Inc. Connie. Is there a deadline when you can?
End of February. Last day of February is the last day you can do it.
So we have about six weeks that we need to, we need to just make sure.
I'll try and get a hold of Mike tomorrow, because he was going to personally write them a letter as well. He had their contact information through Beacon, he said. So he just thought maybe a letter from him and a letter from the town office could do something.
But I think the timeframe has gone out, so I think we can just go ahead and hire someone to do it and then, you know, follow the ordinance and assess them. Correct, Mitch?
I'm sorry, I was.
Yeah, the prairie dog letter, you know, they still have no action on that. We have until the end of February to actually do the abatement per state law. You can't poison after that time until sometime in June or something.
July 1st.
Well, July 1st. So if we want to take action on that, I think we just need to find somebody and do it. We've gone through the whole process, so. If you want to follow up on that, then Donna, I appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda is legal. A, we're going to be discussing later in executive session. B is, that was addressed in the last meeting. And C was addressed in the last meeting. And I failed to request to have them removed, but I did this time, right now. Okay. And the next item is the WRT termination agreement, mutual. Any comments or any on that, Mitch? I know you provided them.
Well, we just got the original. I just brought it to the meeting.
Okay, all right.
For the file.
Yep. I request a motion to remove agenda items B, C, and D.
I'll make that.
Motion made by Vicki, seconded by Linda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 11, engineering. First item there is A. Has South Dakota DOT submitted the bill yet?
We have. We received it. I'll have it in the next board packet for claims.
All right, thank you.
Need to do a little research on it.
Yep, thank you. Okay, town of Hermosa Water and Sewer Extension Project, that's pending. Some of the KLJ projects that they're working, the CLMA, that's the, has to do with FEMA, and that's for a letter of MAP amendment for doing work in the flood plain. And we're still waiting on some tasks that have to be signed off. One task signed off by Elmer. Then when Elmer's done, taken care of it, then the board president will have to sign something. So we're still working on that in order to get all of our environmental stuff completed, so we can get our Fonzie, so we can go out for bid for the contract for repairing of the lagoon. Yes, sir.
On that project, then, is Ace is still going to be responsible to satisfy that engineering on that project, since she was the engineer on the North Water Sewer? Because it is no cost to us.
No, we're not, we're not doing, we're not looking at the North Water. We're past that agenda item. So what you're asking about is item B, before we got, we went by P.
Right, I hadn't told my agenda, but.
Yeah, no, 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 that's, we can, we can, we'll just, we'll go back up to that and talk that. If she's going to do it, she'll have to do it at her own cost.
Well, it's still part of the project.
Part of the project contract.
And she never has ever done change orders or costs above and beyond because of the cost of completing the project. And that's part of the project site. So anything that we have final approval on, she should be the one responsible to go out for the bidding, to satisfy what needs to be and retain the cost of what needs to be. Where we don't have any cost brought to us.
Yep, and I agree with you on that.
And allow her to finish that project.
And we can, if the board wants to go that direction, we can. We'll be discussing some other issues, but yeah. So I think maybe what we'll do on that, then, where it's pending now, if there's no objection from anybody else on the board, we'll look at having her come up with the bidding and the stuff on that project.
And I think we should probably send a letter to her and explain to her.
We'll have to.
That now with the approval, we need her next focus of what she's going to do, how she's going to attempt to move forward. Of course, in contact with finance officer and board and their steps. And that way we can get progress going on that to get completion and have that satisfied.
But like I said, there's other issues and we'll discuss them in executive session. So we'll go back down to item number two, where we're talking about, you know, trying to, engineering staff reports and office support. That is, KLJ has two tasks completed. They reviewed a plat and that was submitted and part of the KLJ bid. And then they also did a review of the grant that was submitted for the FEMA FERC program. And that will probably be on the next claims. Feasibility study for tying into Southern Black Hills water to submit to South Dakota DNR, that's pending. Number seven, water and sewer along Whitney, that's pending. Number six is actually. Ah, bypass number, a bypass number three. Evaluate the lift station at Ferguson subdivision, that's going to be part of that FEMA design grant. And then also, six is going to be part of that design grant. There's four projects that were submitted on that. Highway 79 sewer repair, bidding and construction management, yeah, that's seven. Okay, yep, we talked that, okay. And that there, we will move out and put under potential injuries. Okay. Again, I'd like to request for KLJ to prepare a cost estimate and draft task order to update the comprehensive plan. Motion made by Vicki. I'll give you a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Donna. I will start this discussion. KLJ will be preparing this cost estimate and draft task order at no cost of the town. Once we have the data from KLJ, the board can decide whether to move forward or not. An updated comprehensive plan is critical in getting grants in the future. And that's one of the things when we have people looking into some of the grants and stuff, and that's one of the things that they say, if we don't have an up-to-date, current comprehensive plan, your request package kind of goes in this pile and this is the one they picked from. So, any further discussion? No further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say same. Motion carries. I didn't catch your comment.
I just wanted to mention that comprehensive plan is the board's view of how they want to see their city in five, 10 years. So you need to remember that KLJ doesn't know what views and what hopes you have for your city.
Yep.
So it's going to be a lot harder for them than if.
Well, it'll be, what we'll have to do is we'll have working groups.
Yes, yeah.
As we do, as they're updating, we'll have working groups, because we don't have some of the, some of the stuff that they have for putting the whole packet together. No, it'll have to be done in working, in working meetings.
Just curious how that's going to work.
No, you're 100% correct. It has to be done in working meetings, yes. Go ahead, Dan.
And also, I think, once we see what their cost is, is why I went along with this, with this point.
Yeah, we can always say no.
Maybe where we put a committee together of our own to review it as what we have in the past and use the former PNC board, as they were familiar with it, at a lesser cost than what it would be with KLJ if it's very absorbent, and go forward with it from that point.
Yeah, and we can make that decision when we see what their cost is.
And I've never, I guess, in all the years that we did grants and loans, ever had where they ever came back to us on a comp plan and wouldn't issue us a grant or loan because of a comp plan.
That's, that's what some of the people were saying that we're talking to about grants, so.
Yeah, I've never, ever heard that.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Dan. Next on the agenda, okay, that was discussion. I think we did the poll in favor. That motion carried, okay. Under Public Works.
You want to.
Go ahead.
You want to remove C3 and 6 first?
Ah, yes. I request a motion to remove agenda items C3 and C6. Motion made by Linda. Do I have a second?
Yes.
By Vicki. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say same. Motion carries. Public Works. Go ahead, Chuck, if you can give us an update on the, one of the things I'd like to have an update on is the status of the lagoon being ready to have it pumped, and then also the status of having Pond B and C to operate and surcharge. I'll just turn the floor over to you, Chuck.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is street. And Gary and I have not gone around all those yet. Street lights, there's one out on 79 out there, and I've got to double check to see if we have that light. If we don't, there's one on order. I'm going to try to keep one on hand for such a situation. So I got to go back through the inventory. I'm pretty sure we don't have one here. And if we don't have one, the chances are pretty slim that Ponrad's, they got one too. Sometimes they pick them out of the holdup. So I will be making that phone call tomorrow. The other light had been reported two or three times over on Fifth and Folsom, and they have still not repaired it. I'm going to give them a call tomorrow also. Water, everything hanging in there, good. Just more chemical coming, except, and I think there is, I was thinking about the quarterlies. Aren't they due, Gail? January 1st is for October, November, December due January. So I think that rad sample probably has to go in this month. I think we got 10 days, 15 days, something there. Sewer, I guess one of the things that I want to ask about and discuss briefly is pace. It's in the 24 budget to have that done. However, they usually want a footage and a contract signed and a couple, three months advance notice. So is this something we want to do right away? Or we want to wait till spring? Or, because we skipped it twice. So I guess that's, that's a, it has to be done because of the C-mob and that's part of our agreement to genuine cameraing and checking for repairs and stuff, so.
I just.
When they want to schedule to have it done, I will try to give them a call tomorrow also.
I think we need to start the scheduling process, so we can, when the, when the good weather gets here, it can be accomplished.
So, update on the ramp and Pond B. We made the barrels today for the suction hoses and pick up some type of heater to go in there. Got a couple, three different choices, I guess, on what to get there. So I'll work on that in the next day or two. And other than that, it's, it's ready.
Did you put the tieback anchors back to?
We drove the stakes and stuff on the tie-in on the bank.
Okay.
So we just made the barrels today for the suction pit. And it'll be a storm that tomorrow, but I don't want to be doing that at 20:00.
Yeah, and what Fred said, when he get, when you get it ready, then he wants to bring his people out that's going to be doing the driving, and he wants to have it looked at so they understand. Go ahead, Linda, you had a question.
Did the barrel that I gave you work?
Actually, we couldn't get enough of them to match it. So they've got to be, those are 34 inches high. We need 60 inches. So we actually made them out of metal and welded two of them together to get our height. So if you want it back, you can have that.
You can bring it back. I mean, you don't need it.
Use it for something, horse water or something.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
I think that's out of the water. We got to double check on those quarterlies. And the bolted tank situation, that's still on hold. It hasn't changed any. And I don't know where I'm, what open work orders I did, but I know that there's two or three meters. I'm probably going to have to order one box a meter because I'm doing down again. So a hundred bucks a piece for six in a box.
And back to the lagoons, they seem to be holding their own then?
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
I mean, if it's ready, I mean, it could happen.
It's rising.
We're not in any crisis, but...
Yeah, yeah. I think I'll turn it over to the finance officer at this time. But, go ahead.
I was going to ask Chuck, what's that street down the little lane to the south?
Whitney.
Whitney. Is there, is there lights down there that will be put in? It's totally black.
Well, I don't know. I'm going to put one in where the road station goes in there for sure. There's one on the corner of Third, and that'd be about halfway up. There'd be one where that road station is, which would light up part of that. And, but I don't think there's anything else to mount up, is there? Corner of Fifth.
There's a street light there.
And then it jumps down the third.
Fifth down, all the way down around the corner. I drilled that the other night for coming in that way. Totally black. And people walk on that, and there needs to be a light if somebody's run over down there. City might be held responsible for that.
That'd be a good project for Joan to look into grants for solar.
I don't know.
Streetlight poles.
Whatever. I'm just saying it needs the lights going there.
That's it.
Should we put that down as an action, ahead of the follow-up? The lights down there? We'll put that as an action to follow. Yes, Joan?
Just for clarification, on your open work item, twenty-eighty Manning is a sewer leak, not a water leak.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we'll have to look at that, so. I don't have, I guess...
Excuse me, second action.
What's that?
What she just said?
No, we just need, she said that there's something wrong in the...
No, I'm just clarifying, where it says on your form, water leak, it should say sewer leak.
Yeah.
So on this...
Oh, on the work order, on the work order?
Yeah, we, yeah.
Okay.
That was, must have been a typo.
Should say sewer leak.
Yeah. Okay, now I can, no, any further questions on any of the public work stuff? Okay, now we'll move on to item number thirteen, the finance officer.
So, I was able to get twenty-twenty-three closed out, but just barely, so I'd really rather defer to the year-end report after I have a few days to review some of the information I saw. Like, if you look on the revenue report that's in the packet, and if you look at the year-to-date balance, the revenue report is...
Yeah, it has revenue report.
Right after twelve D. So the revenue report, if you look at the year-to-date balance, if you go, it looks like we overshot with, you know, on the plus side for general, but if you go down, and what I'm concerned about is, is the difference of what we budgeted in sewer. If you look at the first column, fiscal estimate is what we budgeted, and if you look at year-to-date balance, we only pulled in one hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and three, so I'm trying to figure out what happened there. And if you look right up above, so I'm going to kind of bounce around here, if you look right up above in water, if you look at the budget, it's six fifty-nine, seven hundred and fifty, but remember that six hundred and fifty-nine includes that five hundred thousand dollars from the WRT, so it's really, we only budgeted a hundred and fifty-nine, seven hundred and fifty in water for operating. And then if you look, we went over that. So, I don't know with the new G-works, because remember, G-works, we, twenty-twenty-three, it was a changeover to, so I don't know if some of the sewer got put into water, because it's quite a bit of a difference on both of those. So I'd like some time to kind of review these reports a little bit before I really give a real good end-of-year twenty-twenty-three report.
Okay. I think we'll just look for that on the next agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Then on the department updates, the SBI insurance coverage.
So the SBI insurance coverage recommendations, I think you all worked on that with Jody, that you said that you were going to have those two things, that those two...
We went out and looked at them, we took pictures. I think she requested, she sent some pictures in to the person who did the inspection, and he was supposed to come back and say, was that what he wanted repaired?
Okay.
One of them was very clear, all we got to do is just get an extension out here. The other one, the building up at the, on the hill, the pump house, a little storage shed there, and based on their description, it's kind of hard to tell, and they're looking at the building, what were they actually looking at wanting done? Because it looks like to really fix it, the whole thing needs to be recited, and then we'd have to look at what the cost of reciting is and what is actually the value of the building.
Oh, okay.
They're supposed, they're supposed to be getting back.
Okay.
So we might have to follow up on that.
I'll follow up on it with him. Okay.
The next item is a class action suit, and it looks like flushable wipes are a problem everywhere, Chuck. Mitch, I just wonder if you could read for that class action suit and provide your comments and what it means?
Well, I haven't read it, but... Did they ever send information to us that we wanted to...
That was it. It's like a postcard.
Yeah, and if we don't do, if we don't do anything, then we're part of it. And what it was is, someplace in North Carolina and someplace else has filed suit against maybe about five different or six different companies who make these things, and they call them flushable wipes. Well, those flushable wipes have caused a lot of issues, and they're looking at now going against, going after them to have them change how they advertise them, and if we don't do anything, we're part of it, so.
Right, and then you're... The only ones that make out on these deals are the lawyers.
Mitch, what do you? Yeah, yeah. They'll change the name on it.
I'm just too impressed, well, I don't know how we're part of the class here, if we haven't been, didn't we just have a recent one where we are part of the class, that law firm of New York or Pennsylvania or somebody?
Yeah, and I haven't seen any information on that.
That's typically how, I don't know what this means, is just sent to the finance office without any registration of who we are?
Nothing, just this paper right here.
Okay, well, I can't comment on this without digging into it. But, you know, there might be a few bucks at the end, but the lawyers are the only ones who make money, millions.
Sure you don't want to go to the... Gary, no?
No.
You could get a free trip to Charleston, South Carolina down there.
Not right now, weather's not too good there.
I think it's hurricane season or something.
No, I can just imagine.
Next item on the agenda was the twenty-twenty-four South Dakota Legislature. It's proposed bill, do you want, go ahead?
No, that's fine, go ahead.
You can go ahead and read it.
No, I don't need to read it, I just...
What it is, the proposed bill, I'll be in general when I look at it. Pretty much, House Bill one-ten, an act to require customer consent for installation of smart meters for utility service. Be it enacted by the legislature of the state of South Dakota, section one, that chapter forty-nine thirty-four be amended with new section. Before installing a smart meter, a utility must obtain the customer's consent. The utility must provide to the customer information on how the smart meter would collect, manage, and store data, and if the data is sold to a third party. For the purpose of this section, the term smart meter means an electronic or digital device that records utility service data and communicates the data to a utility. And I guess my question on that is, is that, does that cover what we were looking at doing with our meters?
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
But this is just proposed.
It's proposed, and so I guess, I guess what we need to look at is, we talked about having it, having it done, and we talked about, you know, was the town going to pay, or the citizens were going to pay, and I think what came out of that, we was going to wait and see if a, if we could get a grant, if we could put in with some other project to get the money to do that. I'm not saying this is what we should do, but do we need, we need to look at, is this something that we want to have accomplished before this would go into effect? If we see that we need it. I guess my question is, is if we don't, we don't do it, and then if somebody wants it, someone's don't, then the whole purpose of why we want to gather and use that data is to build, you know, look and help find out if we have leaks and stuff, it's just... Okay, go ahead, Linda.
Well, I have two things about this. One is, I would like to know what the municipal league is, if they've got an opinion on it, if they're working on that particular situation?
Okay.
How they feel about it, they'll know, have comments from other cities too. And then, yes, it definitely applies to what we're doing, and I don't think there would be enough time, because generally speaking, if it's in, if it's in session in February, that means most of those laws that they enact are usually July first.
Yeah.
So we would not be able to finish that project, no way, no how.
Then we don't want to start it and be halfway through, and can't go no further.
So, so, yeah, that's an issue, and we'll just have to keep involved with the state's legislature and see what happens. Municipal league is really good about sending out information that informs towns on what the legislature is doing that will affect cities.
Yeah, I definitely see the concern where, you know, people's data just gets gathered everywhere and sent everywhere.
We actually went ahead and got the consent now, if you wanted to proceed with that. You could do that.
Yeah.
You know, you're already being compliant, assuming it passes, it probably will.
And I just, like Linda said, I don't know where the municipal league is on that, but I think we don't want people's data to get out there and get sold and get sent out there. I mean, every, I mean, at least once a month, you get this letter and say your data was compromised from something. We don't want that, but what we really want is to have the ability to meter everything all at once and look at the water meter, and that'll give us a true data of our water usage and help us, you know, do we have leaks or don't we have leaks, and help us move forward that way, so. So I think what we'll do, we have an action item to get with the municipal league and check with them, and if they're kind of in favor of it, and they're pushing it, then I'm sure it's going to happen. And then I think we maybe just need to take the proactive step, as what Mitch is saying, and move forward with it to try to get the consent. Any input from the citizens on that?
I don't know yet.
Don't think so.
Speaking of the municipal league...
Yes, go ahead.
When is the legislatures that we get to go to? Isn't that usually the first month of February?
That is February...
I haven't heard when that is going to...
Rib dinner, yes.
Yeah, the rib dinners in this one.
Eat. I haven't looked at it yet.
Thank you.
So, do we want to talk about that?
Yeah. Yeah, February sixth and seventh.
Of February?
Yep.
So we have time on the next meeting to put it on the agenda?
Go put it on the agenda and find out who wants to go and make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
And the sixth and the seventh, you're looking at that, Vicky? What is it?
Tuesday, Wednesday.
It's always on a Tuesday, always boosts up our board meeting, we always have to...
Is that...
It would be two, wouldn't it?
No, no, it's, we use the first and the second, yeah.
We're on the first and the third.
The first and third, yeah.
So that means that you should probably, probably put on the agenda the possible change of that meeting?
Yeah, we'll add that to the agenda also.
Thank you.
There was an issue, and also in the packet, there was some correspondence that went on between Sanders sanitation and Jill about a citizen wanting a two-and-a-half-yard dumpster. That was pretty much resolved with conversations between Jill and Sanders and Jill and the customer, and they decided that just having two totes would be adequate for them. Sanders has requested us to look at the issue as to whether people within our municipality can have a dumpster, and we'll go back and we'll go through. That'll be something that we'll look at when we update the next, that ordinance again, so. Go ahead.
And is that person then going to be charged double for having two dumpsters or two trashcans?
I think, I think it's, that's what it is, it's got to be, I mean, it's...
Yeah, just make it say.
Yeah, if they have one tote, they get charged, they have two totes, they get charged again, so, yeah.
Double, too.
Yeah.
No discount on that?
No. Because it takes a truck just as amount of time to grab it and throw it up, whether they got to move very far or not, so. Grant research is pending. Tracking items, any comments from the board on the attached tracking items? If no comments, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. I request a motion for the BOP president to sign the attached engagement letter with independent audit services to audit the town of Formosa for the two years ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Motion made by Linda, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vicky. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say same, motion carries. Yes, go ahead.
No, I, no, I take that back.
Motion, motion carries, it's all ayes, okay. A computer for the town, that was done, was in our plans packet. Okay, another item on the agenda, go ahead.
Oh, did you get it up and running?
Yeah, that one's running, the one in the office running.
Very good.
Faster, quicker?
Faster, quicker.
Good.
No, no...
No glitches, no?
Yeah, no comments coming out of the office?
No glitches, yeah, knock on wood, Jerry.
Very good.
The next item is, on it is, I request a motion for hiring a full-time finance officer to be moved to a work session on January, on the eleventh of January. Can I get a...
Make that.
Motion made by Vicky.
Awesome.
Seconded by Linda. I will start the discussion. We as a board need to relook at, I feel we need to relook at the job announcement so we can reach more applicants by providing a greater flexibility for the work hours in our, on what we offer out there when we request to hire somebody. Linda and I have had, had talks about that in order to reach people, and we just need to look at the flexibility. That's some of the people that we've talked to in the past, whether they're part-time or full-time, when we were looking at applicants, and the flexibility sometimes is just as important as the hourly rate. As, and so what we want to accomplish in that working group, working meeting, is to come up with the announcement that has some, you know, flexibility built into it, so when we go into the interviews and stuff, those answers will be, those answers will be, be able to answer to the applicant at that time, so. Any further discussion? No further discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Not always is the finance officer a part of a work session, so I want to make sure that Gail knows that she will be needed at that, because one of the things we're going to have to put in there is the things we're not flexible about. This has to be done at a certain time, this has to be done at a certain time, this has to be... And so we will need Gail's input there for that meeting.
Do you want to attend to me?
Yes. Okay.
Okay. If no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say same. Motion carries. One of the things that I put together was a, a hiring process, and I just request a motion to approve the attached hiring process. Motion made by Vicky.
And I'd like to thank you for doing that.
And, uh, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second. If everybody can have a chance to turn to that, that's.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thirteen H. And I'll start the discussion. By approving the attached hiring process, we will also be approving the special meetings that are needed for that, you know, publication of the announcement, once we get it put together, and other due dates as presented in it. One of the things that, on the first round of, uh, resumes that come in, what we wanna be able to do is hand them all out to all of the board members, the names and some of that stuff will be blacked out, but just by looking at their job, we'd like to have the whole board go through and rate them, say we have seven, I'm gonna, you'd rate this one, one through seven. So that can be used with the hiring committee, which is a finance committee, we can use that in the evaluating and picking who goes on to the second. And that would be based upon the interviews and the packet that they had. So, one of the things when Gail had said that she would stay until the first day in October? No, May, May.
Good shot, Jerry.
The first day in May, the first day in May is one thing that she really, she stressed is that time goes fast, and we need to have a set process scheduled that we follow, so we make sure we get that person on, onboard, and time to change, and time to go, and.
It's already mid-January.
Yep, and, so. So, I don't know, it was in the packet, hopefully everybody had a chance to look at it before the meeting, but that's done with my schedule, any further discussion? Just go ahead, Dan.
I guess I don't see the need to have a motion to approve this, because as you go through your work session, you're gonna be discussing all of this anyway, and then we'll be acting on everything after we go through work sessions, it'll be initiated and sent forth, and it's kinda hard to follow this course, because if you have one hiccup, then you're off, and you're alternating everything anyway, so. So to me, I wouldn't even put the pressure of a motion on it, and this is a great outline to follow, and then we work through it on the work session, and then move forward from there as the process goes forward.
Okay, yeah, well, I understand your common concern there. I guess one of the reasons I wanted it is, and I think it's needed, is we're approving upfront, yeah, we're gonna do these things, we're gonna have these meetings, and we're gonna try to meet these timelines, I know that we're gonna be working through them, but we just need to have upfront commitment that we're gonna work this way. And this here could compress pretty good, hope, you know, depends on how number of people we get, that we're gonna carry from the first round to the second round, or if we only get one person, there isn't gonna be too big of a second round. But we just, by doing this, you know, we're approving the special meeting that we're gonna have, we're approving that when the, the board members get the, their agendas, or get the resumes on the ninth, that they will get them reviewed, well, no, they'll get them on the fifth, and that they'll have their review and ranking done by the ninth, it's just, it's just a commitment process, so. Timeline on, go through it, so. Go ahead, you have a?
But as Dan said, if, if it does change, then don't you have to change the motion on it and everything's in, in another meeting?
Looking at Mitch.
I would say yes.
So, to keep it more flexible, then maybe we should, yeah. But if we don't, if we don't have a motion for this, and we'll have to have a motion for the meeting, then we'll have to have a motion for the BOP removal, of review of the resumes, for the working group, and.
Why don't you just leave it in your packet every time, and just kind of use it as a, as an outline?
Yeah, but in order to have a working.
Rather than a mandate.
But rather, in order to have a working meeting, we have to have a vote and agreement to have a working meeting, and that's one of the items in here. In order to have a special meeting, we have to have a motion and a vote to have a special meeting, to put a timeline on the board members to have something back, then we'd have to have a motion there, that's why I was trying to get it all into one. Now, if we wanna do three separate motions, we can do that, go ahead, Dan.
And we always have, done motions for work sessions, special meetings, to discuss them, and then put the content of whatever it was gonna be into that meeting. That way you didn't have to worry about changing or amending or altering, that's kind of been a normal process forever.
But what we're trying to do is, that is for individual when they're not really tied together. We could either go through and amend this, and really what, the only thing that we'd be looking at is the, the working meeting, special meetings, or else we'll just let this die, and I'll go back and request a motion for the working meeting, then a special meeting, so. Any further discussion?
Yes, I like your schedule.
Go ahead, Dan.
Haven't you already set a work session for the 11th, then? We really don't need anything else, other than let this fail.
But we need, we need to have a motion to set that working meeting, because we haven't had that motion yet. That's why I'm saying, the motion, you know, you know, if we approve this, it does approve the working, the special, and the other items that need to happen down through here, so. Go ahead.
I don't, maybe I'm remembering wrong, but I don't ever remember having to have a motion to have a work session. It was just something we all agreed upon, that we thought we needed, we wanted, and it was the same kind of thing, I mean, it's, happens occasionally where somebody cannot make it, that's just the way it is, but I don't remember ever having to have a motion for a work session.
Yeah.
I agree with, you know, we will have to have one for a special meeting, yes.
So what we'll do is, we just all, we know we have this, this is what we're gonna kind of follow, we'll let this kind of fail, all in favor? I think if we get, yeah, we had a motion, we had a first, and we had a second. All in favor?
It's a good guide.
All, all opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now what we would like to do is, I request a motion to have a special meeting on the 18th of January. May I have a motion?
I'll make that.
Motion made by Vicky, do I have a second?
I'm gonna second it for discussion.
Second it for discussion. Okay, further discussion?
Well, again, we don't know exactly what's gonna happen, so how do we know exactly that we're gonna have to have the meeting on that date?
Because we need to have the meeting on that date to get things done, and also, there's another item that's gonna be on that working session also, and that will be, that will come up on the agenda later. So, the working, that meeting needs, needs to happen, so. And if we don't set timelines and set goals, and then all of a sudden, Gail is gonna be gone, and we're not gonna be there, so that's why. She didn't, yeah. So, any further discussion on the, on the special meeting? We had a first, and we had a second, any further discussion? All in favor of the special meeting on the 18th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, three, four, two against, we'll move forward. I request a motion to remove agenda items B, 1 through 4, we'll leave B on there, but we're removing 1 through 4. Agenda item E, F, G, and H. May I have a? Motion made by Vicky, do I have a second?
Sure.
Aye, Linda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say same, motion carries. Okay, under old business, I know that you'd put some stuff together and started getting the letters together, I don't know if you got out and got any signatures yet or not, but.
Yeah.
I know, it's your, it's your, it's your end, and I understand, so.
I know, and then, you know, the training, and then the.
Yeah, yeah.
Going into another job, I, I have not got into the annexation the way that you want me to, I just.
Yeah. And we have those letters where they're, they're sitting there, it's, it's just something we, we just wanna let the public who, I know, understand, and we just want the public to know who wants to be annexed, let them know that we, you know, it's still on our radar, and we're still working towards it, even though there's a lot of things that come up and deviated from of that, so. The next item under old business is Hermosa Connects, the mixer is scheduled for 16 January 2023 at the Beef Barn from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M.
You're 11 o'clock.
What's that, who, what, and?
Lena's here.
Oh. Okay, go.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
You had it right.
Yeah.
January 16th, mixer. So, yeah, we're, we're estimating 60, but, you know, it could be more, we don't know, but that's where we're kind of preparing as far as refreshments and everything. Next meeting is February 12th. There is also a save the date that has been posted to social media, and that is for the June 22nd vendor fair. So food trucks are being called, we'll be back in here looking to close Second Street for that event again, so, yeah, those plans are underway.
Good deal. Five to seven.
Five to seven, yeah.
And, uh, in the office the other day, there was, uh, there was a request by, I think it was Jill, asked Gail about, you know, whether they are gonna, as a town.
I asked.
And you asked, is what, they're gonna be there? I guess I would request a motion to allow Gail and Jill attend the mixer on town time.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by?
Vicky.
Vicky?
What does that mean, town time?
That means you, you get paid for it, or comp time for it, or you get comp time for it. Jill asked it the other day, if they were gonna be able to attend.
Yeah, but we don't have to get paid for that, it's a party.
It's a party.
Yeah, well, that's, that's.
Seize the moment. Seize the moment.
They were asking, they were asking your questions.
I encourage all the town board members to go, because I think it's gonna be a really good opportunity to get a pulse on the business and economic.
And I would like to see the, the office people go, too, and we can't ask them to go unless we tell them we're gonna, we'll fund it if they go, so. It's just a, it's just a motion to see if, to get them comp time for it, or.
If you want, don't wanna get paid, you don't have to.
Well, I'm just saying that it's.
I know your hours are tight, so.
Well, I'm racking up hours, so.
Anyway, that was, did I see, did I get a second on that? I don't think I got a second, so it looks like it died. Died for lack of a second, that's fine. Okay.
But you could still go party.
I actually think we're planning to, so.
Yeah, you guys are planning to, yeah.
Yeah.
And I just thought that, you know.
Thank you, but.
Okay. New business, Southern Black Hills Water presentation. Southern Black Hills Water will be attending the executive, an executive session on the, at the special meeting on the 18th of January 2024.
And an executive session.
What's that?
And an executive session.
Because there's some things in there that are contractual grant, and there's, and there's things that are in there that are legal, there's things that are in there about the lawsuit, that's why it has to be an executive session.
But can't we separate them out, so the public can still hear the bulk of the presentation, then? Because there's gotta be a separation of that, we know what they're accomplishing, so there should be no problem.
I think what, what, what the plan is, just go through, there's some items that have to be addressed, and they are legal, they're contractual, they have to do with the lawsuit stuff, those need to be addressed, and then once those are addressed, then there will be, then they will go out into the public.
Okay, but the executive session is just you guys, that doesn't include them.
There's executive sessions in the past, Mitch, that you sat in on, where Preston's, where, I'm not getting angry, I'm just telling you, that where Preston's have sat in, where lawyers have sat in.
Come on. Now, I just said that you're having an executive session amongst the board to discuss legal matters, why would you wanna discuss legal matters with the other side, present? The whole purpose of a discussion on legal matters is so the other side does not, is not privy to your position. Thank you.
We understand what our position is.
Who's asking? I'm not directing this at all.
Well, what we're trying to do.
Are any lawyers gonna be present?
What we're trying to do is to come to resolve on some sticky issues, and we can go right out into the public, and we can just have a public meeting, but what I would like to make very clear here right now, and I'm not getting upset with you, Mitch.
Well, yeah, you are.
But, but there, there has been executive sessions, where Preston's, whole, their whole family went into the executive session, there's been, when they're discussing contract issues and all that stuff, so this is not something new that we were doing.
Whether it, I don't recall ever having an executive session with Preston.
Oh, yeah.
I don't remember being there.
Well, it happened.
The question is, is whether or not we're having an executive session with Preston to discuss a lawsuit involving Preston, which we weren't. This involves a lawsuit with Southern Black Hills Water, okay? And so you can't have an executive session on legal matters involving that lawsuit if the other side is present, it doesn't make sense.
And then we will.
Nor a contract, if you wanna try to settle it. So I guess we need to have, is the attorneys gonna be present? Not me, because I'm not on that file, but the lawyers from Aberdeen, are they gonna be present?
No.
Okay, well, um, maybe they should be. Is the other attorneys for Southern Black Hills Water gonna be present?
Not their lawsuit one.
Well, I don't know what the purpose of the, an executive session is, whether you do it or not is your business, but I'm telling you, I think it needs to be a public hearing, and it's a violation of the open meeting laws to have an executive session to discuss legal matters with the other side, it makes no sense to me.
Okay, I see what you're saying, but the only thing is, Mitch, and I'll go back, and I will document every one of them, because I have them, where the executive sessions were held.
How many of those involve a federal lawsuit?
Well, one of them.
How many of them involve a federal lawsuit? We're in a lawsuit.
I don't understand that, and the one that wasn't, where there was an executive session, where the public was kicked out, and there was no reason to have the public kicked out, but we'll, we will go ahead, not, we won't have the executive session, we'll just look at, we'll discuss it tonight in executive session, what some of the concerns were, and then we'll have them present on the 18th, then.
That's fine.
So we'll have them present on the 18th.
That's fine.
Go ahead, Dan.
And that was my concern, and I thank you, Mitch, for bringing all that forward, is that basically, we haven't come to an agreement, we have not any acknowledgement of where we're at with the attorneys, and, and I don't see how we can accurately move forward without attorneys all being involved, and having a separate meeting.
And we'll have that.
Just with them and us, to be able to discuss and tell where we are, and I, I understand Mitch wasn't part of that, and that Hig was, but I feel Mitch still needs to be involved, so Mitch understands and can advise us also above and beyond from what Hig is, so, so that's where I feel that is very, very important.
We will, we will discuss it in today's executive session, and then they will brief it, and then we'll have them brief the public in the special meeting, then. Go ahead, Linda.
The only thing I have to say about this is, is if these things were done in the past, doesn't mean we should do them that way again in the future, we need to do what's right.
Oh, I agree with you 100%. Oh, I agree with you one hundred percent.
And let's leave the past out of this, so that we.
No, I agree with you one hundred percent on that, but I'm, some of the things I'm trying to follow is what I've seen happen in the past. Dan, you've had two chances to talk on this, you've had two chances, we're, we're carrying on. And there will be, we'll discuss it in executive session, and then we will go and have them, then we'll make the determination to have them present on what their package is on the eighteenth. Next item, headwater economics. See the, see agenda item fifteen H below, we're gonna discuss more on headwater economics later, so I'm just gonna bypass that there. Item number C is pending, town offer cameras, that's still pending. The lone coyote drainage and the current bridge, that's pending. On the next item, I request a motion to table the town office parking slash lower level to a future date.
I'll make that.
Motion made by Vicki.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Linda, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say same.
Nay.
So it was three ayes, one nay.
Three ayes?
Four ayes.
Four ayes. Next item on the agenda is the Black Hills Recovery Network. We had a really good meeting this morning, Vicki and I did, with, with.
Joan.
Joan. She's able to present all of her stuff to us, to us, you know, all of her checking, her check registers, actually the bank statements that came from the bank. And evaluating that, we were able to see exactly what the income is for the newsletter, from the newsletter, we're able to, we were able to see exactly how that money that came in for the newsletter was spent. And if you go online and look, they say if it's a, a nonprofit, you know, you know, if they're around ten percent, that's great, you know, you know, ten percent overhead and ninety percent go to everybody. By looking at her information, it looks like it's probably ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent. So I think, as far as that goes, it's, it shows that it's, the money that's coming in is being spent. The amount of money that is, that would cost if the town didn't do the newsletter, it costs about three thousand, a little over three thousand a year to print the newsletter, and that's about what they bring in. It's about three thousand. So all the things that, all the things that are happening positive because of that, there's scholarships that come out of that, there's the walking to school and stuff come out like that. I, I just think it was a, a good meeting, so I guess I would just like to request a motion to have the town office continue to print them, with the, with the town office being allowed three businesses, business days to get it done. Do I get a, can I get a?
So moved.
Moved by Dan, can I get a second? Seconded by Linda.
I have a comment.
And discussion?
I still feel like the way it was explained by Joan, that if Black Hills Recovery is to contribute to this, it has to be based on weather and school issues, education. They have money within their fund that could fund printing this and get it out of the town office. I still would like to see that.
I do. Any other dis- discussion? Go ahead, Dan.
I just wanna thank Joan for all your volunteer work on that and everything you've done from day one, and how you've contributed to this, and how you put that packet together before, and twenty twenty-three for that, expressing and explaining all of that, and and I hope that any of the comments made to you weren't taken personal for what you were doing and how you've been doing it. I thank you for what your services are for the community.
Go ahead.
And, and I believe that still, if the president wants to comment monthly on what's going on in the town, and now he feels things is going, that is a, a free thing. Also, letting know about voting and elections is free, and also when we put in anything about being careful about what you, what goes down in the sewer, or what meeting is available, that is all free. Or, or, you know.
Public information.
Public information going out that is helping the town at that cost, so.
Go ahead, Joan.
All those things you mentioned, yes, are free, all nonprofit events, bingo, whatever, that's all free. The bulletin board, any meetings, anything, that's all free, help wanted, free. I mean, the only thing that is charged is for-profit business, everything else is free. And for-profit business can have free help wanted.
Go ahead.
I would like to see, though, that we keep a little hand on how many are printed and how many are wasted every month. If we can lower the cost of the printing for the town girls in the office. I think we need to keep an eye on that.
Yeah, and I think that's at two hundred right now, and it has came down. We've asked that to, in the meeting today of Joan, and she'd be bringing it back. The, we're paying for this with B B and B money, it's not like it's the, the tax, it's, it's taxes that are being paid specifically by certain businesses. And the B B and B money is to advertise and show businesses out there. I know that the, the dollars are being charged to the advertisers, but when you're going back and looking into it, every dollar that gets charged is being, is being given out in either donations, scholarships, going, you know, when they prepare the walk for the school, all that stuff. And so my position, the way I look at it, is it is serving the purpose of what those B B and B dollars are supposed to do, is to get the information about the businesses and get it out there. And bottom line, by looking at their statements, and this, Dan, this, she had a little bit more in these than before, she actually had her bank stuff in this, so it was more than what was before, what was presented before. And Joan put together her records, yeah, I'm, I'm ashamed of my, my accounting, but, but what I'm trying to say is without the donation from the town for in this, that the newsletter wouldn't be able to, the newsletter could, could survive itself, but all the benefits of stuff going to the other parts of the community, the scholarships, all the things that they do wouldn't happen, and so that's kinda my position. If there's any further discussion, go ahead, Matt.
I'd like to see it kind of promoted a little bit more on the website, because I was here for quite a while before I realized that, about the newsletter, you know. So I just feel like it, it does so much good for the community, and yet if you're new to the community, and, and the community is growing, to give it a little bit more of a headline on the website would be helpful.
The town webpage?
Yeah.
And Jill, is it, or Joan, is it on the town webpage?
Well, it hasn't, it used to always be there, but last six months or so, I don't think that it's been put up, but I think a lot of this is simply, it got got too busy and not enough help, you know.
And a lot of changeovers.
But she has for several years put it up there, yes, and, you know, we can. As I said earlier today, one of my thoughts was, you know, once it's back to normal where it is on the website, you can always put a link to that website on Facebook, on the most page.
Thank you for your comment, Matt. Yes, go ahead.
When it's a nonprofit, it's like a five oh one three C or whatever, is there not something that says you cannot discuss political stuff? You cannot print political information, it's.
You cannot outside.
Yep, and, and, and that, that you're one hundred percent correct on that, and that's one of the things that Joan, I, and Vicki discussed this morning, and Joan, and we came up with what the boundaries are, what, you know, what can be done, you know, to make sure that we don't violate that five oh one C requirement of not being there, and I think that in conversation with, with Joan and stuff, I think that issue is resolved. It, there won't be an issue in the future. Yet no further comments from the board or the citizens? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
And four ayes and one abstain. Motion carries, will, the motion will, will continue printing the newsletter, and will the three days, the motion had it, the three days to get it done. Cause there's sometimes, right, you know, especially December and then February, the very end of December is busier than heck, and the very end of January is real busy, so that's why. You know, when I also talk with the office people and they feel they could do it, but they just want those, the three days to get it done. So motion carries, it'll continue to be printed by the town, the donations from it will go out to where they are. Next item is H. Chuck, did you, have you found out any more information on the locating equipment?
Yeah, actually, there's several different ones, they, we've appropriated the money a couple of times, and it never, never came into play. But there's one right now that's on eBay, that guy's got Nebraska that's almost brand new, and has the functions, twelve hundred bucks. There's another one that's on eBay that's around twenty-five hundred, they've come down substantially to what they were for the same type of features and one thing or other, so I guess it's somewhere in that range. Cap of twenty-five, if you get one cheaper, we can.
Input, yeah.
Online is that, you know, when they put something on there, they want their money right now, they're not gonna hold it for you, so that's how that works.
And online doesn't usually have a warranty or anything else, no, go ahead, Dan.
So I think the big thing with the money situation on, that we've always talked about, is that we don't as a town wanna be as the liability. If Mr. Ferguson is gonna be doing the locates, then he needs to purchase the equipment. If he needs to charge more for his locates, then he charges more for his locates, but we as a town don't wanna be the liability issue on the locates, he's putting his name on the locations, he's putting the paint on the ground. If something's wrong, he comes back and says, well, it was the locator's fault that I'm a foot off or three foot off, whatever it is. And the town bought the locator, it comes back to burn us, so that's where we've always stopped and never agreed that that is a good position. And to me, I still to this day feel that way, that Mr. Ferguson should be the one buying it since he's doing the locating and have the equipment himself, just like Jim's private locating that we've used forever, that he has all his own equipment, if he misreads something or a problem happens, he's the one responsible for paying for whatever damages or errors happen, not us. So I feel that same circumstance still to pay, that Mr. Ferguson should be the one buying that equipment.
I think with, with that said, Dan, I think that we need to go back and look at, relook at what he gets paid to do a locate.
Correct.
I know what Jim gets paid if you locate, Jim locates, cause they located all my stuff out on the base for twenty-some years. And it's considerably more than the forty, forty-five dollars.
But you're also correct then, as far as, if he misreads something like got on in the base and they hit a high-power line, his insurance is the one fixing that.
But I think we need to relook at then, what, what the town is gonna pay him to do the locate, so he can, so he can write that off.
Well, and then we can also look at then, if he's willing to put his numbers together, that we look at Jim's also being our locator, and that if we need that done, he can come down and also contract to do the locating also.
Well, the, the locates are actually part of the, his requirements contract.
At present.
At present.
But if his pricing is exceeding what Jim's would be, or not as qualified, then we would wanna look.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna discuss qualified, okay? We don't need to use that word.
Well, with equipment, I'm saying.
So I think this is a, just go ahead.
Wasn't it approved previously at some point for him to go get that equipment?
It would have been prior to my time.
No, that I'm aware of.
I think we need to investigate that, because for some reason, he has looked that up prior. Whether it was on a motion or not for him to purchase it or not, I don't remember, but I think we need to investigate it. Cause it has been discussed and hashed and beat up and thrown down and spit on and stepped on, and he never gets the equipment, and we, we're still sitting here. At some point, I thought it was approved that he could go get one.
Not on my time.
No, I think we need to check.
We can go back and look, but I don't, I know it wasn't on my time, and I know it's been brought up in the past when I've attended these, but I don't know, so. We'll just go back and look. Go ahead, Chuck.
I've used Jim's a lot of times, and they're a hundred and fifty bucks to locate. So that's a far cry from what we're getting here. Wanna increase the price of locating enough that it warrants owning the locator? Fine, but the other side of the coin is that by not having a locator, then, or I think it is, that's playing me wide open for liability also.
And also, just one second, Dan, I'll go to you. Also, under his general contract, we'd have to look at, on that too, is that he's required to do twenty locates per month under his regular contract, so if you take, say even if it's Jim's a hundred, well, twenty times a hundred, that's, that's two thousand a month, that pretty much eats up almost his whole monthly deal, so, you know, would we have to remove locates completely from his, you know, the, the minimum of twenty from his contract, and, and go out the other, so it's.
I know when Redco came to town, I mean, we had fifteen, twenty a day. They would call them in for projects they were gonna do, you know, and the stack was like this, I mean, every one of them was documented, because when it gets called in, two things happen. Eight one one calls me, and then they don't know what time it is. I mean, I've got calls at two o'clock in the morning, cause those people are twenty-four hours. And at night, weekends, and they'll say it's an emergency locate, I said, how can it be an emergency locate for digging a post hole? Oh, well, no, I guess it wasn't, it, it's a routine. Well, then you've got three days to locate on a routine, you know, so. I think that since Redco has done tearing up the town, but now they're going back in and doing the service lines from the mains, so that will happen, and these guys are following, ones from Montana, and some from Illinois, and just whoever they hire to put the drops in, and I, you know, crazy.
Locates is a serious issue, especially when you start talking fiber lines and stuff like that.
We just missed the fiber line by this much over on Drop Street, and. And they didn't mark it. So, I mean, when the dirt caved away and there she was, you know, and the guy that was locating for them said, you know, on the map, this is where it goes. I said, I was standing right here when they bored this. That machine was setting right here. You can still see the imprints of where it was setting. I know that line goes straight south. When we got to the water meter, bank caved off and there she was. We were about two inches from it.
Go ahead, Dan, you had another comment.
Thank you, and I appreciate, like I say, what Mr. Ferguson's done. But you kind of have that equipment and it needs to be you. You are the liable person. Correct. You got to raise your rates. We've said that year after year after year to do it. You need to buy the equipment. And you have to put the paint on the ground. We've had several contractors that also were upset that, well, it's about right here and look at that man home, look at this one and you'll be okay. They want the paint on the ground. So I would just invest in the equipment. It's an appreciation of redoing the locates. And whatever else has to be adjusted or reviewed, we look at it.
Yeah, we have a couple of the contracts we're going to be looked at tonight, but we will go ahead and we'll put those on hold to come back and really make those adjustments in the contract. Go ahead.
Chuck, would you be willing to do it if we raised your price up there to
Well, it's got to be worth.
And to buy your own?
Worth your time.
Well, I understand that. That's what I'm asking.
All the way along, it's done for next to nothing. And, you know, to justify three thousand dollars for a piece of equipment to, you know, you may use it twenty times in a month and you might use it once.
Right, exactly. That's why I'm asking if we approve.
Yes, and I'm probably the most knowledgeable person where the stuff is to start with.
Right.
You know, when you bring somebody in from out of town, they're going to rely on what I tell them, sort of, what needs to be done. And the maps, we've already proved some of the things are not correct on the maps and things like that. So probably the most eligible person to do it, providing I'm still here.
So I think.
We're not going under six feet anytime soon, so.
I agree.
Not on that, not on that one public meeting, he's going to outlive everybody, so we're all in.
That's great.
So what we'll do then is we will, this will be, this will just be left pending. Later on, there's where we're going to be talking about renewal of his contracts. The board put something together, reapproved it, went to him. He had some comments. We need the board has to go back and look at them. We need to come to resolve on that. We won't be able to do that this evening because we need to go back and look at it again. So that's, that'll be on hold later then. Okay, and then the next is H.I. We need a motion on I. And the motion to have a combined election, okay?
And the date.
And the date is.
Oh, excuse me, June fourth. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Open for discussion? All in favor, no discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item is I request a motion to designate the Custer County Chronicle as the town's official newspaper for 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Vicky. Do I have a second? A second by Dan. Linda? Second by Dan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say same. Motion carries. The next item, I request a motion to designate Pioneer Bank and Trust as the official finance institute for 2024 for the town of Hermosa.
That motion?
Motion by Linda, seconded by Vicky. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed, say same. Motion carries. Gail, will you read Resolution 012024, Delaware Way?
Whereas the Board of Trustees for the Town of Hermosa, Custer County, South Dakota, a resolution providing for the classification and salaries of the municipal employees and officers for the Town of Hermosa for the period commencing January 1, 2024. And whereas all salaries and compensation of the Town of Hermosa's officers and employees, names herein shall be as follows. Board of Trustees, seventy-five dollars each regular meeting and fifty dollars each special meeting. Finance officer is twenty-five dollars an hour. Administrative assistant, Jill Divig, twenty dollars an hour. Government office, Von De Belt, sixteen dollars an hour. Mosquito control, Monte Waltman, sixteen dollars an hour. Water meter reading, Linda Kramer, sixteen dollars an hour. Board of equalization, fifty dollars per meeting for representatives. The election board members are fifteen dollars per hour. Now therefore be resolved that these wages and salaries are hereby approved this ninth day of January 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second. Motion by Linda, seconded by Dan. Any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say same. Motion carries. We talked about the contract renewal stuff, truck stuff. We'll have to go back and readdress that and we'll, so that'll be left pending. Federal Emergency Management Administration approval letter of a commitment. I request a motion to have the BOP president sign the attached letter of commitment for the Federal Emergency Management Administration 2023 Building Resilience Infrastructure and Committees, later on referred to as FEMA BRIC grant.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Linda. Seconded by Vicky. I'll start the discussion. Last Friday, the town pushed the button on the Federal Emergency Management Administration 2023 Building Resilience Infrastructure and Committee FEMA BRIC grant application for the design of four projects which comes to a total of four-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars with FEMA paying ninety percent and the town paying ten percent. This letter is in the, is in the town commitment is to pay that ten percent. But when the grant is approved. The South Dakota Emergency Management Administration has committed in an email that they will pay that ten percent. But what the state is and FEMA is two different organizations. So we got to commit that we'll pay the ten percent. We know that the state's going to reimburse, you know, they're going to cover the ten percent. Bottom line resulting in no cost to the town. The grant will also have a twenty-one thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty-dollar reimbursable amount for the time the town, the time the town spends on implementing the grant. And also funds to request a construction grant for the construction of the projects will also be included in that. So I say we have a very good chance of getting the grant. Any further discussion? If no further discussion, citizens? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say same. Motion carries. I request a motion to remove the following agenda items. B, G, L, J, K, L, M, and N. And to move agenda items A, C, D, and E to old business.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Linda, seconded by Vicky. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed, say same. Motion carries. Okay, items from citizens. This is the time that you guys have the opportunity to voice comments and concerns. We also allow input during the meeting. Any further comments? Go ahead.
This might be just a little off, but I was thinking about the last meeting that we had. There was discussion on taking a tree down on Fairgrounds Place. And it was going to be discussed at this meeting, but it's on the agenda. It's taken care of. Kill the tree down on Fairgrounds.
Oh, yes, Dan, do you have any update? You were going to check and see on the type of weed spray and what it would cost to have them do the.
Yeah, and I did check into that. I mean, a guy can pick up a quart of that stuff for twenty-four bucks and uncover it. But the whole thing is, is like Mr. Ferguson said, when we offered to grind that stump, the time lapse missed. And then they were responsible for grinding the stump themselves. So they took that initiative themselves. To me, she should be the one liable to do any of the further follow-up on it, not us. But like I say, for the product without labor, it's twenty-four bucks to put it on and it can be applied by the homeowner. They just need to dig down and uncover everything and open it up and then apply the material to it.
I'll have to, I don't, we'll have to go back and look at the, what the last, I think we're going to go out and find and then decide whether we're going to move forward on it or not.
I think they decided the town was going to take care of it.
I think that's, we ought to go back. We'll go back and relook at what the last meeting minutes read and listen to the recording and then look at our way forward on that then.
And that property has been sold.
Yes, understand. There's a citizen. Okay, go ahead.
The board needs to, if you want to continue to have the Volunteer of the Year award, I need a date of when you would want the applications in so I can publish that. An end date.
Okay, and that's what we could.
Want it in the February newsletter, maybe you want it by the end of February, maybe, I don't know.
And is there, in the past, has there needed to be a motion on what she's talking about?
No, I don't think.
I just think that we'll put it, we'll just have it on the agenda for the next meeting to decide, determine the date.
When do we usually do that, Joe?
Well, it has varied. Sometimes we have it in the January, but it is majority of the times in the February newsletter.
Requesting for input is what you're talking about.
Requesting for.
All righty. Any other comment from the citizens? Trustee input. Dan?
Just to follow up again on what I was referencing on that stump also. I don't believe we ever got reimbursed for our cost of what we paid on the stump grinding either. So the homeowner did willfully pay for it themselves to have it completed and finished. So that's why I followed up on that. Responsibility should be the homeowner. Also in my input, I find it concerning that before, in the previous board, that it was a big concern about law enforcement and that we have law enforcement and that we continue to have coverage for law enforcement. And now it doesn't seem to be as an important of an issue. So I really feel that we need to address and put more energy towards that. I also find it concerning about the direction and how we are going with our new engineering costs and the differences, even though there were some previous problems I know with the previous engineer. The costs were always low and they stayed with the project until it was satisfied and are committed and would be responsible for that. And also the aspect that there weren't no change orders that were added to it. So it's also concerning that the last couple of years with the negative Facebook that we had, that it has affected our community's reputation and state agencies. And that I've always said that we will, in our town's future, improvements and growth have a more difficult timing because of the Facebook situations that went on and for filling our finance officer position. It's always been very difficult on that. And a lot of people follow that. And a lot of people are afraid of the reputation or what may happen to them in the positioning. So that concerns me also. I want the public to definitely pay close attention to the months coming forward as far as the Southern Black Hills Water Agreement, the Lagoon Project, the WRT Project, engineering projects, to protect them from the user fees that are going to come along with this and effects that it will have on our citizens. As far as my commitments last meeting and having in the duties or jobs that I was assigned previously on positions, I do disagree that a statement was made that I had done nothing for the last six months. And I had still continued to work with the dumpster.
The three minutes, get ready to roll up your time, you have three minutes.
And I also, in that, did provide a list of things that needed to be satisfied into town along with the cost to satisfy them. So I fully felt there was commitments there, it just wasn't acted on. So I do hope the citizens will pay close attention to what's coming up in the future and close attention to the infrastructure costs.
Thank you, Dan.
Well, I can't top that by any means, so I guess I'll just. I think some of the stuff you said is.
Okay.
Like I said, I can't top it, so I'm not saying nothing.
We don't go back, what one person says, we can't go back and go against. We can just say. Go ahead, Linda?
Informational meeting, very good, thank you.
Vicky?
I think it's unfortunate Mr. Hall also feels that way, particularly when a lot of the situations he put us in. Other than that, I think it's been very informative tonight. We've made good progress and we shall continue to progress in a positive fashion.
And my input is, I apologize to you, Mitch.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
No.
You're kind of red in the face.
I'm just, I'm talking to Mitch. I just apologize to you because I was a little concerned. We're going to have an executive session and we will discuss some other issues as to why I reacted in the way I reacted. And other than that, I want to thank the public for coming. Again, I just want to go out, I looked at what Joan put together on that stuff. I looked at what they were doing. I just feel that the board made the right decision today to go on forward with it to help the community, so. That's my input and I request a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that.
Motion made at. What time is it?
I can't see it.
I can't see it either.
Seven forty-four is what my phone says.
Go into executive session at seven forty-four? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, say same. Request a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
Motion made?
Seven.
All in favor, aye. Aye, done.
At what time?
At.
Nine fifty-two. No, eight fifty-two.
Isn't later than that?
It's just about, no, it's nine, four nine nine.
Oh, okay.
Nine fifty-two.